All right, Bannock County Commissioners are in session. It's Tuesday, September 23rd, and we have our good friends from the City of Pocatello with us this morning to talk about area of city impacts. So Brent, I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Huff. I appreciate that. So we've been working with the county planning department and working through some of the area of city impact that we kind of were given some direction from the state legislature to address this year with the new legislation. And so we've been talking through things and worked through a map that we've kind of gone through with you already, but the next part of that is the agreement, the area of impact agreement. And so your staff presented us an agreement, and then we reviewed that with the mayor and council and our other city departments, and we wanted to come back to you with some amendments to that agreement and wanted to have that discussion with you and see where you are and if some of these amendments are amenable to you. Mostly, as we look at the area of impact, which I think rightly so, it's been shrunk down to something that is realistic as to what we anticipate future growth, but also in the same token, those areas that we anticipate this annexation to occur are areas that we are seeing a lot of development pressure. And one of the things that as a city we run into is as we do annex properties that were developed outside of the city, we have a lot of issues with the development standards of those developments and the trials and struggles to serve them the way that we would serve the rest of the city. There's things like roadways and sidewalks and landscaping and different things that are developed differently in the county versus in the city. And the whole intent of the area of impact is an area that we are anticipating to become annexed within the city within a five-year timeframe roughly. And so these amendments that we are proposing are to help mitigate some of those conflicts between these properties that might get developed in the county to different standards than what they would have gotten developed to in the city. And so what we're asking for is some way to work together with you, recognizing that this is your jurisdiction, this is your, you have the responsibility of these properties until they are annexed, but also recognizing that at some point in the near future, we do anticipate them coming into the city boundaries. And that conflict that occurs and that difference in the development standards is a pretty big concern for us as a city where we would maybe have to take on or be responsible for some development that doesn't quite meet what our standards are as we annex them. So I don't know if you had a chance to read through those amendments. Would love to get your feedback, what your thoughts are, and talk with you about where you stand.
Okay. Commissioner?
I read through them, but I think that they go against what the Supreme Court said because their area of impact is the county.
Absolutely.
I think that we need to work together but have a mandatory deal. And I can just say that when I was on the Health District Board, there was a city next to us here that was trying to enforce their rules on people, and it was quite a substantial cost. And it just wasn't good for the individual. So I think that we need to work together, but to put that mandatory in there that we have to adhere basically to your rules, I don't like.
Okay.
Commissioner?
You know, and I can understand that. I actually, I was okay with the premise that at some point, that's why we are working together, and I think it should have that work together. And maybe we're looking at language, but when I read those particular things, it said that we would work together and allow City of Pocatello to review it, not necessarily command us what to do.
Yes.
It would be more as an advisory, you know, or whatever. And I guess that's my question. Has Hal or Tristan looked at these possible amendments to that? Have they looked at it?
Yeah, we've sent these over to Hal and Tristan, and their comments were similar to what Commissioner Moser said and that you as a commissioner probably feel more along those lines. But our intent isn't to take the responsibility of it from you. We do want to work with you on it. We recognize that it is your jurisdiction. We're not trying to impose that we have to be the ones to do it. But we do want to work with you because we recognize the value of what the area of impact really is and what its intent is, and we do also recognize that it is your jurisdiction and you would take the lead in that. You would want to assist and help in those developments to make sure that those developments do adhere to what our standards are because you're not necessarily always familiar with what those are, but we would love to work with you on those developments. And if we need to massage the language a little bit, we can. We're totally open to that.
I know one of the things, in my experience of being a mayor for years, and we didn't have that much problem, but I do know there is a difference in requirements. In order for you guys to actually annex something and put it into your fire system, you've got to have more than a four-inch main line just for future fire protection. Wastewater system, how is it going to tie in? And I think those kind of issues, I think we do need to have forward thinking because we, to tell you the truth, I'd love you guys to annex them in and have it under the city's jurisdiction and the police. And so I think if there's just an agreement, maybe it's terminology, maybe it's the definition, but I think we do need that cooperation and recognizing the fact that ultimately that decision is probably going to be based with the county. But I'm all for working together and making sure those jigsaw puzzles work together five years down the road, 10 years down the road. It may never happen, but I don't have a problem with having higher standards in the county in the future. I mean, look, the City of Eagle got so much in trouble because they worked independent and they just did not mesh together with Ada County at all. So that's my philosophy, and I agree that we have that jurisdiction, but I'm all for working together and see what can we do to make that thing work better.
And how interesting, do work phenomenally well already with particularly public works when possible and when the developer is amenable to doing that. They contact Merrill, they work through a lot of that with Merrill on what's possible and what's not possible with the developer. So they're doing a lot of that already on like a voluntary basis when it's possible with the developer, when it's right up against city property. They do a really excellent job of coordinating that already. And so as Brent said, like a lot of this could just be language to continue working together when possible for those developments.
And in both sentences there, it says ensure. Ensure that the city is followed. And so that's the key to me.
Yeah.
That says that we have to follow what the city says, and that contractor has to go to you, has to go to us, and it's just a lot of extra.
I agree. I have one concern that I have, and it's not my decision, but just I've been in real estate for a long time in this community. This verbiage makes me wary of creating urban sprawl that people will just then build outside your area of city impact exponentially and say, no, if this is going to be the building standard, the reason I want to build in the county is I don't want to deal with, right, wrong, or indifferent, the city's standards for some of those things. So a developer will say, well, if I buy this land that's just another mile or two outside of that area of city impact, then I won't have to deal with these different regulations from the city. And then we have urban sprawl, which can be catastrophic for smart growth in a community. And that's just a possibility. But with the verbiage, in my mind, that's where it goes, is what we're going to have is we're going to have condensed building and development right here, and then there will be a gap in the area that you would then have some different standards, and then there will be another development out here, and we'll have bigger developments in the county that then when they do need to link up, then we're going to have some serious issues.
And to your point though, but that's the exact problem though, is if those standards are different even in the area of city impact, when they go to link up, we're still having those same issues.
I don't disagree.
So the whole point of this is to make that connection easier, and will there be people who develop outside of the area of city of impact on purpose? Yes, but if you look at where our proposed area of city of impact is, it, there's not a lot of development potential beyond that for Pocatello. Now, for other cities, that might have more of an impact, but for Pocatello, our area of city of impact is really confined by the mountains, is confined by the City of Chubbick. We don't have a huge area of city of impact. There's a little area on the north end, but I'm not too worried about that developing beyond where our area of impact is at this point anyways. You know, it goes down to the gap and it stops there, right? And so it's not like we have this huge area of impact or that the land beyond the area of impact is really that developable. So I'm not as concerned about that. Now, if you're looking at a city like McCammon or something like that, that might be more of the case.
Sure.
But for Pocatello, I don't, I'm not concerned about that. I'm concerned more about, like Johnny Creek. You have an area of Johnny Creek which for the City of Pocatello is a struggle. You have roadways that are way too narrow for us to maneuver, get our trucks up through there. We don't have sewer, we don't have the systems that we need up there, and it's going to be a huge tax burden on the whole city, and it has been for decades, to try to figure out how do we make this area work? And that's what we're trying to avoid is things like that where we have development that has occurred in the county that now we're trying to figure out how do we make this work?
And I'm, along with both of them, I feel like there's a middle ground we can find. Again, I didn't like the language in that because again, like Commissioner Moser, in the effort of speeding things up, having to go through us and then through you guys to get something done, that's going to take way too long. And I'm glad Kyle walked in because I just wanted to ask Kyle a couple of quick questions. How difficult or how much more would it add to our development and the things that we do if we kind of built our stuff halfway to some middle ground in that area of city impact?
Yeah, and we're already kind of doing that, you know.
It's been working that way.
We've been working a lot more, and it's been on a courtesy thing if we bring them in if we're inside that impact zone. Like with Chubbick, we're doing the same with a bunch of the subdivisions out there. I can see what you're saying. We have the same problem, say, up Mink Creek.
Yep.
I think from the days that we approved some of them roads, we've changed a lot in the time. So we are going a lot more to more of even the city's standard and stuff like that, what we're, anything new that's being created. With the older stuff, you know, we're just kind of stuck with it. There is some differences though that we have to look at when we're building roads and stuff is we don't have stormwater facilities, things like that, so we can't always build. There's too exactly what they're used to building, so we do have them kind of conflicts. But me personally, I think it's just that we work close together and we, like we've been trying to do, and that it's, that we let them be involved. I don't know if we need to make it more complicated than it needs to be, but.
Okay. I know the other issue besides just roads, which your ambulance and your fire. I mean, right now, we would love to make sure we have these subdivisions where there is no dead ends. There are no, I mean, those fire trucks are in trouble and they tried to get maneuvering in there. And so I think we do need to develop a relationship. However we do that, I just think because of fire, because of ambulance, you know, road maintenance, snowplows and everything else, I think we're forward-thinking that inside that area of impact, I think we need that, some sort of a relationship building between our department and your department so that we can mitigate the possibility, because it's probably going to happen. And like you say, I've looked at yours, and you have such little dinky targets. I don't think, but we are setting a standard that maybe other communities might want to follow. And I think that's our, the danger that we have. City of Lava probably is as crucial as anything. We want to make sure that our standards are the same with an open handout, say if there's a better idea, let's embrace it. That's my philosophy on that.
So I think where we're at is we like the concept. We're definitely amenable to the idea, but we just need to flesh it out a little bit more. And I kind of agree with Kyle, if there's some way that we can kind of make it like a general MOU that we agree to cooperate to a certain level and to a certain minimum standard or something to that effect, that I think that makes a lot more sense because as, again, as like Jason said, none of us want urban sprawl.
Right.
And I know Hal and I have had a lot of conversations about that area of city impact and changing our design standards so that it's easier to connect to your services when they come through and are available and things like that. So we're marching in the same direction.
Yeah, and I think you're absolutely right, and Hal and his staff have been great to work with, and I think, yeah.
Are you sure about Kyle?
I don't know. I don't know about Kyle.
I got my wallet.
But I think we can massage the language a little bit. What we do want to do is make it clear what those standards are, so when a developer does come, they can understand what those standards are. But I think to Commissioner Moser's point, we need to make sure that it's not like they have to go to you and then to us. We don't want to have to bounce around.
Correct.
And so I would propose that as part of that, we would come to the county with the developer to talk about what those things are. And we kind of do that to some degree already, but I would like it to be more formalized because maybe Kyle won't be here in five years and he moves on to something bigger and greater, and you have someone else that doesn't quite understand that process. Or maybe I'm not here, or Merrill or someone from the city isn't here. And right now, we have a pretty good working relationship, but we're just personnel and we're not going to always be here. And so having these things in writing is important, to have a process that we would go through. And so to your point, Commissioner Huff, we need to maybe flesh out that process, what that looks like, and have an MOU. I think that's a great idea.
Sure.
I'd even go a little bit different than that is it needs to be a county standard instead of an MOU because in an MOU, they're still coming to you and you would have say, the final say is always going to be the county, and you said it.
Yes.
I mean, it's ours. And so I think that we're trying to skirt a little bit of what the legislature was intended when they come out with this. I mean, they come out because there was problems between cities and counties, and so I think we're trying to skirt that just a little bit. So I think it's our obligation as a county to make our standards in these areas, in our zoning and stuff, so that it more closely matches what the city's is. That's what I'd say.
And I think that's the direction we want to travel.
Yeah, and that's.
So we align.
That's our wish too. I mean, I agree with Commissioner Moser on that. It is the county's responsibility, and our intent with this language was to make it simple that you can just use our language because our language does change at times. And so if we're going to maintain that consistency, it's a lot easier to reference our language, but ultimately it would be up to you as the county to implement that. And we would be more than happy to assist in that, to help with those interpretations, help with those reviews, help with that process. But ultimately, it is up to the county to decide what those standards would be.
Well, it's a good conversation, and I think we're headed in the similar direction.
Yeah.
We all want kind of the same thing, and how we get there, whether it's an MOU or changing our design standards, we just need to flesh that out. So we'll continue to have you talk with Hal and Tristan, and we'll visit with them and get a direction.
I have one other question. So we do have a public hearing scheduled for the area of city impact, and I've talked with Hal and Tristan about it. With this discussion still happening, I don't know if it's best for the residents to come to a public hearing without this ironed out first. So we know.
You've got a deadline then, don't you?
Here's the thing. We do have a deadline, but also this deadline is a lot sooner than what the legislature's deadline is. And so you're pressing a deadline that's a lot faster than.
Only by a month.
A month is a big deal.
If it's not, then it's illegal.
So for us, well, and I talked, I talked with Tristan about that, and I requested that we hold off on that public hearing because we were still working through this, and it was just pressed forward. Now, it isn't, I mean, I'm happy to massage this, I'm happy to work with you on this, and I want to, but that timeframe is really tricky for us as a city because of our timelines with our meetings with the city councilmen and going through that process. We're not necessarily as nimble as some of these smaller communities. We have a lot more working parts and a lot more complexity to what we're doing. And so that is my concern, and I don't want to go to a public hearing without all of this ironed out, and the people who live in that area of impact understand what this is going to be. I don't want to have to come back and say, well, we're changing this now, and that, I don't think that's fair to the citizens.
Well, like we told Lava when they came and had a very similar discussion, is the area of city impact is an ongoing discussion. It's a living, breathing document, and it is expected and anticipated to change as new things arise. And so I think we're going to press forward with our deadlines and go, and just because we have the public hearing, that gives us the opportunity to hear some public feedback and maybe reshape this document or reshape some of the things that we're talking about. So.
That's fine.
I think we're.
And I would go with the original document that they talked about, and then we'll arrange it or massage it as we go, like Commissioner Huff just said.
That's your prerogative.
We're going to live on the edge.
However, I think it's more important to be right than it is to be timely. So let's do what we can under the circumstances, but let's make sure that we don't just jam something through, that we take the time, whether we extend it beyond and before we decide, let's get it right the first time.
Absolutely.
I don't like the idea of just keep pushing it back in and changing it because then you have to have new public hearings. So let's do what we can to get it right with as much as humanly possible as we can do that. On your efforts, I do know from the same argument that we just had here that City of Pocatello could have a big turnover come shortly, and this isn't about people, this is about a process and a procedure, so hopefully we can keep that in mind.
Oh, absolutely.
I don't envy what could be happening in City of Pocatello as well with possible changes in there as well. So if we can get the roadmap the way it should be, then we know what it takes for each one of us to come to the table.
And just for your information, it is a minimum of four weeks before we can get a signature on anything because our legal department requires three full weeks to review a document, and so that would be three full weeks before the week before a city council agenda, so it's all properly noticed. It takes quite some time to get a signature from our end.
No, we've got till the end of December.
It'll be.
We got time.
And also, just as far as next steps here, so we'll go back to our staff, we'll massage this language based off of the feedback we received here, and then we'll need to take that to our city council for them to review it, to make sure they're okay with those changes, and then we'll come back to you for a discussion on those changes, if that works for you.
You bet.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Seth?
And friends, good morning.
I have three items of business this morning for the Juvenile Detention Center. I'd like to start with the memorandum of understanding between Juvenile Detention and Family Service Alliance, if that's all right, since we have Sarah O'Banion here, the executive director for Family Service Alliance. This is a memorandum of understanding. The purpose of this is to ensure mutual support between the parties or purposes for compliance with federal mandates of the Prison Rape Elimination Act, in which the District Six Juvenile Detention Center must provide inmates who are victims of sexual abuse with access to victim associates or advocates for emotional support. To this end, this MOU will establish the terms and conditions upon which Family Service Alliance will provide said victim advocates. So this is to replace a previous agreement that we had, I think dated 2013. So it's pretty old. So Sarah's here to also sign along with the commissioners and myself, and then I will have to also get a signature from Caribou County Commissioner, who is the director for the, or not the director, but the board chair for the Juvenile Detention Board.
Sure.
So it's our role in the community to provide victim advocacy, and so we do that not only in the community, but also in several kind of jail studies, and so we do that with juvenile detention, and we're happy to continue to do so.
Sure. Questions?
No. No problem at all.
And I assume this is with all of the district, not just Bannock County?
There are different victim advocacy, well, there's only one juvenile detention center.
Yeah, this is for the Juvenile Detention Center. If we were to have a victim in the facility, whether they're from Franklin County or Bearlake or Bannock, they would, we'd all work together with.
Okay, and that's my understanding is if they're in our facility, no matter whether they're from Preston or Mulatt or whatever, they would fall underneath this MOU.
That's correct.
So if someone was leaving the facility, we could help them get connected. For instance, if they were in Mulatt, we could help them get connected to a sister program. They could continue to work with us and work with that program, or continue to work with us, or decide to move on to that program.
Okay. With that, I'd make the motion that we authorize the signature on this document.
Okay. We have a motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you.
Do I sign too?
You will sign.
Yeah. We'll get it over to you here in just a second.
Okay.
Yeah, they all got to sign, and then I think Jason will attest, and then I'll still have to get it fully executed with Commissioner Songson, and then I'll get it back to Christie.
Thank you. It's very cool.
I think you're the bottom line.
Thank you.
Oh, that's the wrong line.
And I still need one more second to try.
Okay. So you want that before we have?
No, we'll get Jason to do it. Yeah, I'm gonna do it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. And then my next order of business is a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Juvenile Corrections for pass-through funds. So this is the first time we've had this specific agreement. It is replacing, we've had juvenile detention clinician program in our facility since 2008, so we've had a yearly memorandum of understanding with them to keep that going. This time around, the Department of Juvenile Corrections has changed the funding. So in the past, they've always paid our contractor, which is the clinician who does all of the clinician work in the detention center. They've paid that clinician directly, and they want to stop doing that process across the state, so they've basically made all of the detention centers move over to this pass-through agreement where they will pay the county, and then the county will pay that contractor. where they will pay the county, and then the county will pay that contractor. We've been working with Christie and the state on this to get it set up. And then basically, the financial impact it has for us is that they will pay us $58,400 to be able to pay those clinicians.
And we ran, we set that up through the budget process.
And this is the same thing that we was doing with the crisis center, basically. We was getting the money and passing it through the kind of, in essence.
Yeah, that was a grant.
From the state to the...
So we're not a physical agent with this one here? With what we're funding here, the pass-through, so it's a different definition than a physical agent?
Basically, the only thing that's happened is we're paying the contractor instead of the state paying it directly. So they're giving us the money, we're paying the contractor. And again, we just, we set that up as an additional line item in the budget, both for revenue and expenses.
So we have no other responsibility to oversee anything?
Nope.
Okay, that'd be the difference between that and a physical agent.
And you already signed the contractor clinician. So this is just saying we'll take the money in. And the state's, Matt presented his portion, I think, last week. This is new, the state's never really made this agreement before, that we're receiving the money in. I guess it's just a new process.
Yeah, I think they're trying to get things standard because some counties were doing it like this, some counties were doing it with them paying them directly, and they just wanted all to be the same.
Okay. Any further questions?
I'd go ahead and make the motion that we sign the pass-through agreement as stated.
If we have a motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I'll also need that agreement to get it finished by getting it to the Department of Juvenile Corrections. And also Bryce Somsen will need to sign that one as well as the chairman of the board.
Next, you've got the mini casha.
Yeah, and then Jason took off, so I'll, oh, there he is, I was going to say, I'll have to go track him down for another signature. He's back. Yeah, and then the final item is the mini casha contract. So if we have overflow juvenile detention capacity, then we use mini casha in Rupert to house those juveniles that, when we're over the amount of beds that we have. So the only thing that's changed with that, we've been doing this contract since like 2005 yearly. They moved their costs up from $150 to $200 last year, which is still probably slightly less than what it costs us to have them every day at our facility. So it's, the price is really good.
You want this one too, right?
What do we charge others when we house them?
We don't really have any space to house anybody, but if we have juveniles that are with us, say the Department of Juvenile Corrections, they have five days to get juveniles out of our facility after they're committed. If they need to keep them longer, we'll charge them $250 a day if that happens. But it's so rare, in fact, it hasn't happened in years.
Okay. Okay. Any further questions on that?
I'd make the motion, we go ahead and sign this agreement with the Mid-Idoka, mini casha, or whatever.
Yeah, mini casha.
Okay, mini casha.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And there's three copies of there for anybody to sign, so you're aware.
And I don't think I have to do anything with that one, so you can just send that on.
Okay. Well, thanks, Seth. Is that it?
That's it. Thank you.
That was a long list from you today.
Well, glad we got them handled.
Okay, Shanda.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shanda Crystal, Chief Procurement Officer, and I have with me today...
Buddy Romroth, Public Works Assistant Director.
One item before the board today, and that is to discuss a recommendation to award the winter road salt invitation to bid. That was opened last week, and we had two companies propose. After reviewing to make sure that they met all mandatory requirements, we would like to recommend to the board that they award the winter road salt invitation to bid to specialty construction supplies for $46.29 a ton delivered to the three locations.
Any questions on that?
So is that an unlimited tonnage?
So they have estimate dollar amounts that they have, that total about 2,000, 3,000, 3,000 tons.
Okay.
But we do leave a little bit of room in that bid. We're definitely not tied to if for any reason they don't need it or can't store it. We're not tied to, we don't have to buy 3,000 tons. And then the same deal, if we get a winter opselipson that lasts for eight months, we do have the ability to buy more.
Don't even say that.
I was going to say, don't say that.
That was my question, is whether we're tied to an actual tonnage or whether it's just per ton within reason.
Okay. Okay, I would entertain a motion then.
I would make that motion that we go ahead and award, is that the right word for this? Award that bid to...
Specialty construction supply.
Specialty construction.
Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have prepared letters. Thank you. That was my only item before the board today, and we'll get that out, and Buddy will be able to start ordering the road salt.
Okay. Buddy, since you're in the hot seat, I was going to stay.
Okay, so I've got a list of stuff for you guys today. We're working on some year-end inventory stuff and going through all of our parts and kind of getting the things up again, still out there. I have a list before you guys of items that we thought we should dispose of, possibly donate, and then auction. I can go over them individually or however you'd like, but really, the couple that stand out to me, there's some public access signs that have been in the shop for years and years and years, and we're not really sure what to do with them, they're not signs we use, but they're all new. And so we're going to try to either donate them back to the fishing game or to the Forest Service. If neither of them want them, then we'll not dispose of them, but we'll salvage. Thank you. And then, so the parts in the photo, I guess, that I put on there, we cleaned up a bunch of parts that have been on the shelves for years. Some of the parts we can return to the stores, some of them we can't. They're very specific to what they have to go to, so I don't feel like it's something you could necessarily auction. I'm thinking we could probably dispose of them. But whatever the board's recommendation would be on that, the only other thing I have is...
Buddy, are those parts like heavy equipment parts, or are they like general automotive-type parts?
Both. So there's some blades in there and like bucket tips or bucket, yeah, bucket tips, I guess, and then corner guards for buckets, just a bunch of stuff. I guess from what I had gathered, there was a big landfill project years and years ago, and those parts were purchased for that project, and then...
Every used again.
We don't have the equipment anymore, they've just been there. Since I've been there, I've counted them every year, and I'm sick of counting them. So if we're not going to use them, I'd like to get rid of them.
Is there some value in salvage, like recycling?
Yes, yeah, with the bits and ends and stuff, yeah. That's what we'll do with those. The only other special thing I had on here was a reallocation of the mosquito fight-the-bite So that, in my history at Bannock County, the only time we used that trailer was for the little event we do in April here for the public education. That's the only day we use it, and it's just an enclosed trailer, there's nothing special about it, there's nothing in it. I talked with Daniel, he felt like that's something that he could potentially use. I don't know what the board's thoughts would be on reallocating that to him, but someone should use it, or we should auction it, one or two, because it's just kind of going to waste sitting there.
If he can utilize it, has purpose, utilize it. Otherwise, send it to the auction.
I agree.
Okay.
Does Scott have any use for that trailer at all? I think we ought to check with Scott.
Yeah, I haven't talked to him.
Or possibly the sheriff's office.
Matt, Matt's raising his hand back there.
We're looking for a trailer to haul bikes. I don't know if that's something we...
It's pretty big.
It's a big trailer.
Yeah, it's like a...
They have a lot of bikes.
Four or five bikes.
Okay. It's a 20-foot, like, Vino's little trailer.
Well, if we moved it to like a Dan, and he doesn't have it filled with stuff all the time, it could be kind of like a pool trailer.
Yeah.
Those guys could use it from time to time, or Scott, or whoever.
Yeah.
Well, we could be third off the list. We're happy to take a look at it.
All right, yeah.
And honestly, you just put it in your department.
Make it available.
And make it a pool trailer that everybody knows that it's available.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody's going to use it all the time.
Like, say, it's an empty trailer, so...
Yeah.
If somebody takes it and starts putting stuff in it, it won't be a pool table, or a pool trailer.
Yeah.
Pool table.
We've just honestly been storing four-wheelers and stuff in it in the winter since, you know, we've got the upgraded trailers with bathrooms now, so I've kind of put that one to the wayside, but...
Correct. And if they need it for some event over here, they could still utilize it.
Yeah.
But it could be utilized by any other department.
Okay. So let's do that with the trailer, make it a pool trailer, and let everybody know that it's available for use.
Perfect.
Go from there.
Might repaint it.
Matt just went from third to tied for first.
Wait to be in the right place at the right time.
Well, getting these better that way.
Yeah. And then per the board's suggestion, try to salvage what you can, and then if that's not available, then dispose. Is that what I heard?
Anything for auction that you feel like can go to the auction, anything that is salvageable, salvage. And if we have organizations like the Forest Service or whatever, go ahead and utilize them. I mean, if they can utilize it, there's no reason not to do it.
Okay.
Another government entity.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I'll bring the panels before the board next week. Just wanted to wait for them.
Okay.
These are your prime time.
So we'll make that in a motion to go ahead and dispose of the property as we discussed here. Does that work for you, Nancy?
Ernie said it really well.
Whatever Ernie said.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thanks, guys.
Thanks. Christie?
Christie Clausar, Compactor. I have another opioid agreement for you. These are just agreements we signed, and they send us money, and they spend it accordingly. If you have any questions.
How did you get on that list?
I think, you put me on that list, so that I could bring this stuff before you.
Sign it. Yeah, you get money.
Do we have a list of the projects that we're using these funds for?
We only, we've only used the monies for, we bought some learning equipment for D6, and we paid for travel for...
Right.
Problem-solving funds.
Marshand, yeah.
So that that money could be utilized for opioid treatments.
I was thinking there's...
The sheriffs also use that money for the...
Where's rehab program, is it?
MOUD program.
Yeah.
Those are our only uses at this point in time.
I was thinking about that this morning, I was thinking that we probably should get a little bit more cred and find some good uses for this. There's got to be some way that we can do something.
There is, I have a Schedule A, which is the appropriate uses for those funds.
Would you send that to me?
Yep, and we can revisit and discuss if there's some other uses we want to use. At one point in time when we first started getting these monies, we met with the sheriff's office, I think Ryan O'Hearn, I can't even remember the list of people. Brayden and I were working on trying to get people to get ideas, and Tony's about the only one that has ran with it, and then Jared Marshand with his problem solving. But it's, you could give the money or share the money with the Health Department, and we opted against that.
Right.
But yeah, we'll send you...
I was just thinking this morning, it'd be nice to look at it again and see if anything pops up.
I'll send it to the board and Jason, and...
Yeah, if you would send them.
And I'll send it to Jonathan, and if you want, we can have a follow-up meeting at some point in time.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the Health Department just seems to try to find places to put it too, so I mean, drive, spend the money they get, so they're in the same boat we are.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
No.
I would entertain a motion then.
Make a motion, if we go ahead and sign the opioid settlement agreement.
Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I have that original back? I'll scan it to that board. I'm the one that submits it, so see if I have it. Last item I have for the agenda, if Matt wants to come up. So all of the furniture that the YDC ordered has come in. The company is housing it in a warehouse, but said that they could deliver it on-site if we wanted to try and pay it this year. We do have some ARPA funds left over, well, I guess I could share the cost. The cost is going to be $30,118.76. We do have $30,000 budgeted in Matt's department for next year, which we had anticipated paying for this furniture. Because it did come in early, I wanted to request of the board, if you want to pay for it this year, we will have some excess PILT funds this year. However, next year, we only have $100,000 budgeted in PILT for the remaining outstanding ARPA projects.
Paid for it?
If it's, if they're storing it, can we still pay for it? Because it's...
We want it on-site. I want it there if it's not on-site.
Where are we going to put it?
They can have it delivered.
Yes, we can get it delivered Thursday or Friday this week, and there's that storage room outside, or we can put it in the classroom, so we should be able to...
Honestly, we can put it inside now, they're done inside.
They wanted to wait to make sure they had everything cleaned up at the site, but we do have an update tomorrow.
Okay, well, I walked around there a week ago.
We got a trailer we could park it up there.
Go get the trailer.
Our bad. You're getting this thing better. That's right. We're now first along.
Yeah, now you're 1A.
But I'd just pay for it now, I mean, if we have the monies available.
And at this point in time, my latest update on PILT that's unobligated is $280,000.
This year?
So this would be $31,000 a pound.
Yeah.
I just show pay.
This year's PILT, yes, FY '25's PILT.
Let's do that. Let's do that.
And our requirements to pay for it would be it has to be on-site, so you'll just coordinate, let me know when it's on-site.
Put it in the trailer. Back it right up.
It's eight pallets, we'll figure a place to get it up there, so...
Okay, so we need a motion on that then?
That's a big Vino's trailer, and I have to fit eight pallets.
I'll make the motion, we go ahead and pay for the furniture out of this year's budget using the PILT funds. Okay, we have a motion. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thanks, Matt. You're a winner today.
I'll stick around.
Go buy a lottery ticket. All right, we have four resolutions and ordinances before us today. We have Resolution 2025-61, awarding a firearm to a retired sheriff deputy. 2025-62, approving tax cancellation requests. 2025-63, authorizing the destruction of records. And 2025-64, authorization to dispose surplus property assets. Is there any discussion on those resolutions?
Nope.
I would move that we approve those as listed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And last is the consent agenda. We have manual checks, alcohol licenses, certificates of residency, some salary rate